Thank you for attending tonight's meeting of the Westerville City Schools Board of Education. We're delighted to have everyone. The agenda will be displayed on the screens at the front of the room for you to follow along. There will be two opportunities to address the board this evening, the first being Agenda Item 6.1. The first set of public comments is relative to Agenda Item 7.1 through 11.3. Please state the agenda items you are referencing at the beginning of your comments. The second opportunity is Agenda Item 12. There is a sign-up sheet located on the back table or on the table in the back of the room. Each speaker will have five minutes to address the board and a timer will be shown on the screen. And with that, Ms. Marshall, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Bell?
Here.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Here.
Ms. Cotter?
Here.
Mr. Velarde?
Here.
Mrs. Davidson?
Here. Will you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Up first on our agenda are district highlights and recognitions, and I'm going to pass it over to Mr. Velarde for that.
Thank you, President Davidson. As always, we really like it when groups come in that we can recognize some of the great work that is being done in the district and around our community. Before I invite someone to the podium, I'm going to go over to the podium, invite the Dr. Kellogg, Ms. Marshall, and the board to stand up front so that we can greet those who are receiving the award. Tonight's special recognition award is for the Westerville Civitane Club Award, and to do the honors, I'm going to invite up Gertie Glass, our Director of Special Education, who will introduce some club members and the award winner. Gertie.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, and Dr. Kellogg. My name is Gertie Glass, and I stand in front of you to introduce Ms. Klein, who is a member of the Westerville Area Civitane Club. Civitane International takes great pride on helping people with disabilities. Last year, the Westerville Area Civitane Club reached out to me in an effort to honor a teacher on a yearly basis who goes above and beyond helping our students with disabilities. With that said, I introduce you, Ms. Klein, who will highlight the honorary accomplishments.
Thank you very much for allowing us to take a few minutes from your meeting. We represent the Westerville Area Civitane Club. Our local club has about 30 members, but Civitane is an international organization whose goal it is to find ways to help our communities. Part of our mission statement says our clubs are dedicated to serving individual and community needs with an emphasis on helping people with developmental disabilities. In support of that goal, we've organized spring dances, Easter egg hunts, and other events, especially for those with such disabilities. Last year, thanks to Donna DeTrey, one of our members, we initiated the Special Education Professional Award to honor those who work with children with special needs. Ms. Glass solicited nominations from within the district. This is an excerpt from the nomination letter about the person who was finally selected. This individual routinely meets with staff on community information, reaches out to community members, and establishes meaningful and lasting partnerships on behalf of the district. Due to her eloquence and ingenuity, members of the community are highly motivated to work within our school buildings and with our students. She has set up tours of day programming so families can see firsthand the options for post-secondary transition. She always looks for ways to grow the programming offered within Westerville. She goes beyond expectations to provide authentic transition opportunities to students with multiple disabilities. She serves as a bridge from school to adulthood. There were many more glowing words in her nomination. We announced on May 1st at Best of Both Worlds on the Audubon campus that the recipient of our second annual Special Education Professional Award is Intervention Specialist Ms. Cassandra Lawson. She will also be recognized at a Westerville City Council meeting on May 21st, to which everyone's invited. Then we'll present her a plaque and a small gift, and her name will go on the district plaque, which displays past and future recipients. And I want to thank Ms. Glass for her help.
Thank you for coming tonight. We really appreciate the Westerville Civitane Club, all that you do, this incredible focus. We have a gem among us with Gertie Glass and all the work that she does around our district. And for those of you that are serving those who have special or unique needs, helping them to transition in life, we, the board and the leadership team, recognize that that is a blessing and an honor. And so, thank you for coming tonight. One more time, applause for these folks. And I believe there will be some pictures out in the hallway. Thank you again for coming.
Moving on, 4.1, may have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held Monday, April 22nd, 2019, and the special board meeting held Monday, April 29th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Marshall?
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. We do not have any reports tonight, and we also do not have any public comments, so that takes us to financials. 7.1 may have a motion to approve the resolution of the updated five-year forecast fiscal year 2019 through fiscal year 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, President Davidson, members of the board. Today is May 6, 2019, and we are updating the five-year forecast. It was last approved in October, so this is the May update. I just want to go through a couple of things purpose of the forecast. We talked about this in October, but I like to remind everyone, it's a valuable, long-range planning tool. It's to serve as the basis for the 412 certificate, which is the fiscal officer certificate that allows us to certify for appropriations, our wage schedules, our expenditures, things like that. And it provides a method for the Ohio Department of Education, the Auditor's Office, to identify districts who may be having financial difficulties. The requirements of the forecast, new this year, we have to have a five-year projection filed with ODE no later than November 30th. That's previously been October 31st. That new law will go into effect for this upcoming forecast, and then it has to include the current and ensuing four fiscal years, and we have to update it no later than May 31st, which is what we're doing now. And then three years of actual information is also included for historical purposes. There are three sections to the forecast. Revenues are shown in lines 1.01 through 2.08. Expenditures are shown in lines 3.01 through 5.05. And then fund balances, changes in fund balances and reservations of fund balances are reflected in lines 6.01 through 15.01. This is our total revenues. We're anticipating slight increases beginning in fiscal year 2020. We do have a slight decrease because of the timing of tax payments we'll talk about for '19, but overall, we have about 1% approximately for each year of the forecast anticipated This is a snapshot of the total makeup of our revenue, where it comes from for fiscal year '18 actuals and what's projected for fiscal year 2023. Not a lot is planned to change in terms of the amount of funding we get from the state versus our local tax dollars between that time. This is our local property tax line. Increases in property taxes result from new construction, expiring tax abatements, and expiring TIF agreements. General property taxes are real estate taxes that are levied on residential, agricultural, commercial, and industrial properties. The slight decrease in general property taxes that we have shown here in 2019 was expected due to the timing of tax payments because of the changes in the federal tax law and how much you could exempt from your federal taxes. Public utility property taxes are taxes levied on personal property of public utility companies. We expect just slight increases from growth from that. State foundation and reimbursements. Unrestricted grants and aid is state funding received from the state foundation formula that's not restricted for a specific purpose. So examples of this would be like our basic aid, our opportunity grant, gifted, special education funding, all those things. Restricted grants and aid is state funding received from the state foundation formula that's restricted for a specific purpose. So currently in the funding formula, that's career, tech, and economically disadvantaged funding. The forecast assumes the current funding model, as it has been for the current year and last year for this biennial budget, which includes a 3% cap. The October forecast was a 2.5% cap, but because we wanted to mirror what the current law is, we just left it at 3% cap, so that was updated for this forecast. The annual loss to the district is expected to be approximately $12 million each year of the forecast. We do have two biennial budget cycles in the forecast, so the one that everyone's talking about right now and they're working on, hopefully will have in place sometime soon, is for fiscal years '20 and '21, and then we'll have another one in '22 and '23. And then property tax allocations or reimbursements directly from the state for property tax rollback and homestead exemptions, and they follow property tax estimates. I wanted to show a graph to just kind of show where we've been with interest revenue and where I think we may be going. So, it shows the last four years of actual and five years projected in interest revenues. We've worked really hard to take advantage of rising interest rates, and we anticipate over $1 million in additional interest revenue this year as compared to last year. The forecast assumes declining interest rates, declining interest rates, which means declining interest revenue, and as declining cash balances too, would affect that. The revenue that we receive on our interest goes directly back into the operations of the district, so it's part of the general fund projections for revenues, and it goes to support the programs throughout the school. This is just a comparison of the October forecast for the current fiscal year compared to this forecast. Overall, an increase of 1.7% in revenue. Our revenue uncertainty, state funding, again, the two, we have two biennial budgets during the forecast period. We've talked about the governor's budget, the Cut Patterson Work Group's funding model that they've proposed. We have a House substitute bill that's being considered currently, so we're still very early in the process. We've not heard anything from the Senate yet on that, so we won't really know. Property values, the economy, and then legislative changes. You know, the elimination of the tangible personal property taxes years ago meant millions of dollars in revenue lost to the district, things like that could affect our revenue.
Guys, quick question.
Sure.
In the House, if you go back, in the House substitute bill, at this point, and we preface it always with that, right, "at this point," have they not put in there some of the governor's request for some of those wraparound services? They have kept.
Yes, they have kept that.
They've kept that part, right?
Yes, they've kept that.
Okay, okay. I wanted to make sure that that was still in, and I knew, as of today...
As far as I know.
Yes, and I didn't read anything differently today.
Yes.
So, I just think that's important for people to know that...
Yeah.
I mean, they're wrestling with that. We, I really thought Cut Patterson was like really on to something, but, I mean, I know it's all a, it's all a kind of a wrestling match. I just wanted people to know that that piece of it, which I think is important, I suspect we do, but I think is important, was still a part of it, as of now.
As far as I know, as of now, it is.
Okay.
In the substitute bill that's being proposed, and wraparound services that we're talking about are the money to go towards services for social and emotional well-being in children and things like that.
Yes.
And that was something that was part of the governor's budget, that as far as I know, is still in the House substitute bill.
Awesome. Thank you.
Expenditures. Expenditures are projected to increase by an average of 6% annually throughout the forecast period, as we have growing needs with staffing and the needs, you know, enrollment growth and the needs of our students. This is just a snapshot to show FY '18 actuals, the percent we are spending versus what's projected for '23. So we have about 76% that's spent on personnel currently, and in '23, it's projected to be about 80% of overall. There's a shift out of the services line a little bit. I thought it would be helpful to show, I don't know if this is very easy to read from back there, but I thought it'd be helpful to show what we spend our money on. So, we talk a lot about salaries and benefits, and materials and supplies, and capital outlay, and all those things. I thought it would be good to see like where that money's being spent. So we have about 75% that's spent on direct classroom instruction and support of our total budget, and then extracurricular and co-curricular activities are about 1%. Transportation is about 5% of our overall budget. Business and operations, which includes things like maintenance, buildings and grounds and utilities, is about 9% of our overall budget. Administrative services, which includes things like building principals, managers, supervisors, and districted office administrators, makes up 8%. And fiscal services, which are our tax collection fees, the cost of processing payments to vendors and payrolls, and anything that comes out of my office, makes up about 2%. Personnel expenditures are about 76% of our total expenditures. Teachers had a pay spread out over 27 pays during FY '18 due to payroll creep, so FY ' '18 payroll was a little bit lower than what it normally would have been. The forecast includes adding 11 full-time certified employees for the current year, and then 11 full-time certified employees for fiscal year '20, and then 10 full-time certified employees for years '21 through '23. Again, do you want to...
I was just going to ask a question. So is that a dollar amount or actual people in there? It's a dollar amount?
So that is the average cost of that many full-time certified employees, dollar amount, yes. So it's not necessarily, we're just hiring 10 people, but that's the amount of dollars that we've budgeted to hire at salaries, yes. We have growth anticipated in enrollment, and then special education needs. The MyVan drivers, they're currently paid through the ESCC O in the current year, and they're going to be brought back in as staff next year. So you'll see a shift from other objects to the personnel line for that. And personnel services is inflated by approximately $4.5 million in fiscal year '23. That's because we have 27 payrolls instead of 26 in fiscal year '23, but we're not overpaying anybody because we spread their payout over 27 pays last year, so it all works out. I know that can be confusing sometimes. Other expenditures, purchase services includes things like payments to other districts for tuition for special needs and other students, payments to charter schools, and our utilities and other contract services that we have. Materials and supplies includes textbooks, software licenses, consumable items that don't have long-term useful lives. Capital outlay includes equipment, technology, and other items with long-term useful lives. And then other objects includes services purchased from the ESCC O van drivers. Costs shifted to salaries and benefits in 2020, like we talked about. Overall expenditures were decreased for the current year by less than 1%. That's really just due to timing, so that was shifted into the next year. Our expenditure uncertainties, staffing needs, the educational needs of students, economy and inflation, who knows, right? Healthcare costs are something that we continually look at, legislative mandates, there's always something that's coming from that, so we continue to be informed and be on the lookout for those. Our changes in fund balance, deficit spending expected to begin in fiscal year '21, so when we went through this in October, we were looking at deficit spending in '20, so that's pushed out slightly a year. That's due mostly to an anticipated increase in our revenues and a slight shifting of our expenditures due to timing. The state has historically, sorry, underfunded us by $12 million and will continue to do so throughout the forecast period if we continue along the same path we have been, and that we will need to evaluate our future levy options to help offset the state shortfall. That's all I have. Any questions from the board? That tick all the time, I feel like I...
Any questions? Any questions?
No question, but I want to thank you for the presentation and the way you present the information. I do like your circular chart that shows where the dollars go. I think that's very helpful to people to see. I also appreciate the level of reach-out that you do to all of us to make sure that we're up to speed and we know what's going on at any given point in time, and I just wanted to say publicly how much I appreciate all of your efforts in that, and I certainly appreciate all the efforts to increase the interest income.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Ready to vote?
Yep. Yes, please.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 7.2, may have a motion to amend the fiscal year 2019 annual appropriations.
So moved.
Second.
It's back, no, take your time, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, President Davidson, members of the board. So this is the amending the annual appropriations resolution. We have just a couple of changes in grant allocation. We actually had an increase in one of our grant allocations for $120, so we have to make sure we amend that. And then we had the new grant, the School Quality Improvement Grant. Walnut and Walnut Springs and Westerville South has been awarded a new grant. Only $35,000 of it is for the current year, and then the rest of it will be over the next, I think it's four years they have to spend it, so...
What's the total of the grant?
It's about $600,000 altogether, so Walnut Springs is about $400,000, and, no, South is about $400,000, and Walnut Springs is a little less than $200,000, so it's...
That's fabulous.
Yeah, and then we have the first phase of the South renovations. We weren't sure if those would be in this year, so we were waiting for the bids to come back, and so we're adding for that. And then we have our insurance claims are up the last couple of months, we've increased that.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. Moving on to personnel consent agenda, may have a motion for 8.1 through 8.8.
So moved.
Second.
And Dr. Hopkins is with us.
Good evening, President Davidson, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg. I'd like to present for your consideration tonight's personnel consent agenda. Some of the highlights of tonight's consent agenda are as follows. We have the retirement of one individual on tonight's agenda. It's Ms. Deborah Brenning, who's retiring from her food service worker position at Genoa Middle School. That'll be effective June 1st. She has been with the district for 10 years. We also have a total of six resignations from various classified administrator and teacher positions. We have some one-time payments that will range in professional development activities that range from exemplary teaching in our multilingual and diverse classrooms, the culturally responsive educator, motivation matters, and comprehensive sheltered instruction observation protocols. So our staff will be doing a lot of PD, and also some home visits to support our kindergarten instruction. We also have the employment of individuals in a number of classified, classified substitute, and classified supplemental help positions. We have the employment of three licensed teachers, who I unfortunately are not here this evening to recognize, but we're excited to have them join us next school year. And some individuals that are with us this evening that I would like to introduce are the four assistant principals. And I'd like to start by introducing Ms. Susan Smucker. If you can please stand. Susan is being recommended to the board to serve as the assistant principal at both Faust and Pointview Elementary Schools. Susan joined Westerville Schools in 2008 as a classroom instructor, teaching fourth and fifth grades. She also has teaching experience in Columbus City Schools, as well as Johnstown-Munro Local School District. She transitioned from the classroom to be an instructional coach with us in 2015, and in 2016, she became our math and science curriculum specialist. She holds her Bachelor of Education from the University of Toledo, her Master of Education in Curriculum and Instruction from Ashland University, and her Master of Education in Educational Leadership from Ohio Dominican University. Thank you very much, Ms. Smucker. Unfortunately, our next assistant principal, Rochanda Elder, is not able to join us tonight. She is staying late to support her students at her current school, which I believe is further evidence that we have hired and selected a very student-centered, dedicated, and committed professional. But I would like to share with you some information about her. She is being recommended for the assistant principal position at Huber Ridge Elementary School, where Rochanda has previously served with us here at Westerville City Schools, when in 2017, she was the acting assistant principal at Mark Twain Elementary through the Bright New Leaders Initiative. She presently works as an assistant principal at Mithlin Middle School and Columbus City Schools. She holds her Bachelor of Science in Education and Human Ecology, as well as her Masters of Business Administration from the Ohio State University. Next, I would like to introduce Rochan Parker. If you could please stand. Rochan has been recommended by Mr. Lanier and his team, and I'd like to certainly thank Mr. Lanier, Mr. Nickel, and Mr. McElwain for joining us this evening to support Mr. Parker here as their new assistant principal. Mr. Parker has six years of experience as an assistant principal in Pickerington Local Schools. Prior to his administrative tenure, he was a secondary English teacher in Columbus City and Whitehall City Schools. Mr. Parker received his Bachelor of Arts from the Ohio State University and his Masters in Educational Administration from Ashland University. Thank you for joining us tonight, Mr. Parker. And finally, I'd like to ask Mr. Stephen Smalley to please stand. Thank you, Stephen. Stephen Smalley is being recommended by Mr. Gaddis and his team, and I believe Mr. Gaddis is here or was here to join us. He had to leave a little bit early for, I think, a PTA meeting there to serve as the assistant principal at Genoa Middle School. Stephen, as you may know, is currently an assistant principal in Westerville, serving both Walnut Springs and Heritage Middle Schools. He has served in this capacity for two years, and prior to that, was the dean of students at Walnut Springs for four years. He has a total of 21 years in education, with 19 of those years here in Westerville. He has a total of 21 years in education, with 19 of those years here in Westerville. He received his Bachelor of Degree in Education from Wilmington College and his Masters in Primary and Middle Administration from Ashland University. Mr. Smalley, congratulations, and thank you for joining us this evening. And I'm happy to field any questions you may have.
Questions?
No, but I'm going to comment again, this time, Dr. Kellogg, Dr. Hopkins. I am so excited about the team that is in place for next year, as each email has come saying, you know, this person has been identified, this person has been identified, this person has been identified. I am happier each time, because the crew that we have, the administrators that are working for us in this district, working for our kids and our community. When I say us, I'm talking everybody in this district. They are top-notch, and they are really remarkable people. So I'm glad you decided to either join us or stay with us, because it is the right place to be. It's kind of like Westerville, where you belong. So thank you for joining us.
Yes, thank you. Okay.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. We do not have any old business. That moves us to new business. 10.1, first reading for Bylaw 100, definitions, and Ms. Marshall's going to talk to us about this.
Yeah, so this is an, okay, it's on. This is an update for apps and web services. We're deleting the word "web," adding some stuff about wireless communication devices, and adding about board members and/or other stakeholders and members of the community that it applies to. So not really a whole lot of changes with that. There's also an addition for social media and wireless communication devices. I'm just defining those things.
Anybody? No? Okay, let's move on. 10.2, first reading for Policy 6320, purchasing and bidding.
Yeah, so we already updated this once this year, and Neola sent us another update. So a lot of it's rearranging and kind of identifying what's competitive bidding in the policy, and then it's adding information about blanket certificates. So we didn't have anything in policy for that before, so we went ahead and added that. We don't use blanket certificates. We use super blankets, but we don't use blankets. But I figured might as well have it in policy in case we do need it someday. And then it adds about purchasing school buses and other certain motor vehicles, and that just follows what's required by statute.
Okay. All right. 10.3, first reading, Policy 6325, procurement and federal grant funds. Again, Ms. Marshall?
This is another one that we just updated in February, and so this only applies to federal grant funds purchases. And so we're adding information about micropurchases and the non-competitive proposals and competitive proposals, and basically just says that it will follow our purchasing policy for that.
Okay. Moving on. 10.4, first reading, Policy 6605, crowdfunding. Again?
Another one. So we actually, the board just adopted this policy in February to allow for crowdfunding, which are your websites like DonorsChoose, GoFundMe, those sorts of things. This just kind of defines it a little more clearly, and then it talks about the FERPA requirements, and then it says that any property that's attained through that is property of the district. We had that in the administrative guidelines, but we didn't have it in policy, so we're adding it in policy here. That was a suggestion from Neola.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
You sure?
Yeah. I just think Neola's got a pretty good gig going.
And 10.5, Policy 7504.2, web accessibility, content, apps, and services. Mr. Vrebrance is here to talk with us.
Thank you, President Davidson. President Davidson, Vice President Velardo, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg, Ms. Marshall, before you is a first reading for an update to Policy 7540.03, web accessibility, content, apps, and services. Dr. Nestor Baker, we got three years out of this one.
Yes, yes. That's okay. I won't glare and roll my eyes about this one.
This update addresses some housekeeping of language and terminology, but the primary reason for this update is actually to expand policy language pertaining to website accessibility compliance under the Americans with Disabilities Act. The language that's incorporated now affirms the district's commitment to operate its website in compliance with Section 504 and Title II of the Americans with Disabilities Act. The expanded language also specifies users' rights and procedures to report any concerns or possible ADA violations. As a district, we were actually about a year or two ahead of the game when it comes to this, because we do use a system called SiteImprove that regularly monitors our site for any potential ADA violations, as well as spellgears, potential copyright violations. So this policy simply reaffirms the fact that we're going to do all that we can to make sure that our website is accessible under those compliance matters.
Very nice. Anybody? Okay, thank you so much.
There is one, just, it really is not, I just don't know, not on this one. On 100, I, there's just a typo. I don't know if that needs to be publicly under social media in that new paragraph. Examples.
Oh, okay. We'll fix it.
I mean, that's, yeah, I just, just wanted to let you know.
We will get that updated for the final reading. Thank you, Mr. Velardo.
You're welcome.
Okay. 11.1, may I have a motion for overnight and out-of-state field trips?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? Excited for these kiddos, great opportunities. Ms. Marshall?
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Sorry. Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 11.2, may I have a motion to approve the resolution approving the renovation expansion of Westerville South High School Phase 1, Bid Packages 1 and 2, and Mr. Dorn is here to speak with us.
So moved.
So seconded.
So seconded.
Good evening, President Davidson, members of the board. Dr. Kellogg, Ms. Marshall. The board has previously approved funding for the renovation and expansion of Westerville South High School. That is part of the district's facility master plan. The scope of work for Phase 1 includes the expansion of South's west wing, the conversion of the auxiliary gym to instructional space with the second floor, and adding a two-story academic connector wing to the aux gym. Bid Package 1 is for the general trades, HVAC, plumbing, electrical, and fire alarm work for Phase 1 only. Bid Package 2, however, is for fire suppression work for all phases. Bids were solicited in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code and were publicly read on April 11th. We received five bids in total, three for Bid Package 1, two for Bid Package 2. The lowest responsible bid for Bid Package 1 was submitted by the Adena Corporation in the amount of $13,655,900, and this includes four of the alternates that were part of that bid package. The lowest responsible bid for Bid Package 2 was submitted by Fire Systems Professionals in the amount of $513,243. We plan to award Phase 1 contracts for roofing, flooring, HVAC controls using state term pricing, and we are currently tracking to be on schedule and on budget for South's Phase 1 work, and recommend that the board accept a bid from Adena Corporation for Bid Package 1 work, and accept a bid from Fire Systems Professionals for Bid Package 2 work as presented.
Really, I think the only comment from me is that we acknowledge that this represents a, a ton of hard, heavy lifting by a lot of people. Not only your team, but people out in the school, and parents, and people that have responded to surveys and questions, and we, I, we really are grateful for the work that has been done, will be done, in the conscientious way, I think, the conscientious way in which you and the team and many others have gone about this work. Now, just me, I believe that the renovation expansion is significantly needed. I am highly in favor of what we are trying to do, and am very excited for the students and, I would say, the staff to benefit. And then just really the final, last piece from me is I have two high school students, boys, I won't mention their names, who have come to me and said, "Why didn't you do this four years ago so we could enjoy the benefits of it?" I won't mention their names, and I just tell them to be quiet. So be that as it may. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Dorn.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. Moving on. 11.3, may I have a motion for the resolution granting land owned by the school district to Columbia Gas for purposes of a utility easement?
This goes along with the renovations at South High School. Approval of this resolution would grant Columbia Gas a utility easement in the support of repairing and relocating the existing gas line feeding South and Blenden. The existing gas line is due for replacement due to age and condition, and is being coordinated, and the replacement is being coordinated to support Phase 1 of the renovations at Westerville South. The new easement is 20 feet wide and runs parallel to Otterbine Avenue, starting in Illinois, and continues west between South and Blenden, as shown in the exhibit that was part of the resolution. As it currently stands, the existing gas line repairs are the responsibility of Westerville City Schools. With the granting of the easement, Columbia Gas will become the responsible party for future repairs. We are currently working on two additional easements in support of the South project that will be presented to the board at a later date, an easement with AT&amp;T to relocate the underground fiber line that interferes with the building expansion, and an easement with the city of Westerville for a new water line to support the addition of a fire suppression system. It is being recommended that the board grant the utility easement to Columbia Gas as presented.
Yep, sorry.
So moved.
Second.
No, you weren't. Sorry. I was trying to pick 745 or 645.
Yes. Any questions? Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. We do not have any public comments? Do we have any board comments this evening?
Sure. Whoever, I think we all, maybe Dr. Kellogg wants to too.
We're fighting up here to see who gets to say, "Great job to our teachers for Teacher Appreciation Week." So I will defer to Ms. Cotter for that.
Well, since it's Teacher Appreciation Week, I certainly would like to thank our teachers for everything that they do to, obviously, teach our students, but also to inspire them and develop, you know, good, positive relationships with them. I think that's really important. And also for the rest of our staff as well. I know it's not Staff Appreciation Week, but I think we should show them some appreciation as well. And just like to thank them for all they do.
Dr. Kellogg, do you want to say anything?
I couldn't have said any better. It never ceases to amaze me. You can almost become, it becomes almost customary to walk around and see the excellent work our teachers do and our entire staff do each and every day with our kids. And then this is a good week to pick your head up, take a look around, and remind yourself and be very, very thankful for the great people that we do have working with our students to move them forward. There is no amount of words or appreciation we could extend that really gets to what they do, when you consider how education has changed over the past several years and how our district has moved along and continues to be of value to the community, and that's because of the hard work of our staff. So we appreciate what they do each and every day, and extend them a great week.
No, I just would like to echo that. Westerville City Schools has the best staff around, and we are so grateful and thankful for each and every one of them. So thank you very much. 14.1, the board will meet in regular session, retirement recognition on Monday, May 20, 2019, at 6:00 p.m., and Monday, June 10, 2019, at the Early Learning Center here in East Wind Drive. And 15.1, executive session, may I have a motion? And I'll read it.
So moved. Second.
Executive session for the purpose of consideration of appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of an employee, student, or school official, or to investigate charges or complaints against any such person. My contacts are not working. They're supposed to be viable. I apologize.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. Thank you.
This is 8646.
Okay.
Let the fun begin. Yeah, boy. Jill back. Ow! I'll just wait.